And welcome to this, the July 11th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members who are present are accounted for with the exception of Councilmember Turner, who is excused. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to proclamations and presentations. We have a proclamation declaring July 31st and August 7th as Play Ball Week. And I have a proclamation here for Bill Boomrod and Dave Wetmore. This is, whereas the sport of baseball is called America's National Pastime, and whereas the United States Conference of Mayors and Major League Baseball have come together to recognize June through August as Play Ball Summer, and whereas Play Ball Summer encourages families and communities to participate in the game of baseball, thus creating countless family and community bonding experiences, and whereas in conjunction with Play Ball Summer, the city of Livermore declares July 31st through August 7th, 2016, as Play Ball Week in Livermore. And once again, the city hosts the Little League Intermediate World Series. And whereas the sport of baseball teaches youth valuable life lessons of teamwork, perseverance, leadership, and sportsmanship, and provides a proud sense of belonging to something bigger than oneself, and whereas the best Little League 50-70 division baseball teams from around the globe are in Livermore to compete in what is now the world's pastime. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore, proclaims July 31st through August 7th, 2016, as Play Ball Week in Livermore, and welcomes the participants, organizers, and fans of the 2016 Little League Intermediate World Series. So then, I have Bill Boomrod and Dave Wetmore.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's July the 11th. Eighteen days we have a lot of people coming to our house. I think we're ready. First couple teams are in. The host team is from Danville. Very amazing as it is, our second place team in our district is allowed to try to play their way back to the World Series, which was Canyon Creek. They won the section two weeks ago. They won Northern California on Friday. They head to Nagales, Arizona, for the Western Regionals. We hope that they come back as the West Champ. The Czech Republic beat Belgium to win the Europe-Africa, so our friends from the Czech Republic will be back. And Curacao won the Latin America Championship. Asia-Pacific just started yesterday. Canada starts in a couple days. And all the USA Champions are towards the end of the month. We certainly want to welcome everybody to come out, come out throughout First Pitch, sing the National Anthem. It's a free event, great family event, and we really appreciate this. I will hand-deliver this when I go back to Williamsport at the end of the month for the Little League World Series. So thank you very much.
And the July 30th, the Saturday, the opening ceremonies are going to be at Max Bear Park.
At Max Bear Park.
So it's a little bit different this year, but we're going to have it at Max Bear at 4:00, correct?
At 4:00. And I'll leave some postcards outside here. That's sort of a postcard to put up on the old refrigerator or something like that. It's got a schedule of events. 30th is the opening ceremonies. We're going to have a lot of fun out there that day. We had a little conflict with a big event going on at the Bankhead Theater very same time that day, so we are excited about that. And then 31st, the games start. A little different this year, the championship game versus Saturday night. It moves to Sunday night primetime, so...
On ESPN.
On ESPN. So we're very excited about that.
And for more information, they can go to www.lliws, Little League Intermediate World Series dot org.
Dot org.
Great. Terrific. Thank you. This has been a tremendous effort on your part, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we move on to the Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on any of these items. With that, I have three cards. I would ask you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We have Connie Cops, David McGuigan, and John Stein. Ms. Cops.
Hi, I'm here to talk about Springtown again. My daughter noticed when she was coming home at night, almost, well, on a regular basis, she was seeing raccoons going under where the water drains are...
The storm drains?
The storm drains, thank you. And my dogs have been sprayed by skunks twice within the last two years. There's definitely a vector control problem, and I've called the county vector control, and I don't know that there... I don't know who I was... I never received any acknowledgement that, you know, my voice was heard. And the other thing I have about... The other concerns I have about Springtown deal with like how the land is used and how our perceptions of who owns what, you know? The park maps kind of, and I know you're going to talk about this a little later, too, the park maps aren't clear to everyone in the city parks. How Springtown is divided up, how it is used, how it is owned, has never really been that clear to everybody. Your page seems to be different than the page of my HOA. The Public Works page is a little different, and that's why I was really stressing to get maps that match the actual descriptions of what was purchased. And so I was kind of going to suggest looking at an area that's labeled as a Springtown Preserve, and it's kind of a kitty corner from the park, the Marlin Pound Park. It's a field, and actually, I saw a huge snake as big as me cross Blue Bell from that preserve to Blue Bell Park. It was really cool. And it was either a...
A huge what?
What?
A huge what?
Snake.
Oh, okay.
It was as big as me. I mean, not fat, but as, you know, long as me, which I know isn't huge, but it was crossing the street, so I ran over and got a family to go look and take their picture. And then I went home to get my camera, and I came back with my camera, and there was this lady going, "No picture, no picture." She's throwing cat food in the ravine on the other side. And then she's going, "No picture, no picture." She's got this huge bag of cat food. And so I'm concerned about the rodent problem from... I think she might be fattening up the ducks, because then she went across the way and maybe set a little trap or something. And when you walk to that area in front of it, there is a sign. And the sign, it's really confusing, the Springtown Wetland Preserve. Who really is in control of that? Because the city is listed, the county's listed, the Alameda Flood Control is listed on the sign, Zone 7 is listed. And in my research, I think it was originally Alameda County, but Alameda County has their... That's control focused to Zone 7. So please clarify everything in Springtown before you put anything on the ballot on preserving anything. Make sure we're all on the same page of what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave McGuigan and John Stein.
Tonight, I'm going to talk about something I didn't know when I first complained. This is a copy of the auto logs and incident report that I got from the chief. I think of the... These are the radio calls, and the incident report is kind of like a blog where they, you know, make notes of what happens as it comes along. So you get a kind of a timeline. As you would expect, there's a very close correlation between these two documents. These are the copies that I got from my lawyer. Strangely enough, they're both incomplete. The copy of the audio logs provided my lawyer, or provided to my lawyer during discovery, was somehow missing the records from 1533 to 1544. When I brought this up, the incomplete audio logs up to the chief, he said, "I am unable to definitively explain why you received only a portion of the audio. No explanation, and really no concern, or that pertinent evidence was withheld during felony prosecution." Here's something I didn't show the chief. And I have to believe, like most believe, the chief is not a big fan of coincidences, but here is one that I'm sure he's going to like. This copy of the incident report I got from the lawyer, you can see, has been copied in landscape format as opposed to portrait. The interesting thing is that it's missing exactly the same records as the audio logs, the 1533 to 1544 timeframe. And to be clear, that was not the case. Now, this went through an archiving process, so an intern entered it into a digital archive. And so maybe they caused the miscopy. That didn't happen to this, by the way. Now, the interesting thing is, when you actually copy it in landscape format, this line here is the 1533 line. That 1533 line is still on the page. Now, when they made this copy that I got from my lawyer, they actually slid it down a little bit on the page, when you line up the print, to cause that line of 1533 to drop off. I know, it's really not really important, because we don't know the purview of that page, but I just find it to be a really, really cool coincidence, that extra step to go and get that line to drop off. Now, let me say, let's see if we can help the chief come up with an explanation of why the audio logs weren't complete. There's really only two explanations. It was either an accident or purposeful. The question is, how could a professional charged with the task of collecting the calls for case 481 end up missing the call that says, "This is case number 481"? And then how, when you're collecting or reviewing the evidence and making sure, how could something with this many logs be passed as a legitimate document? Now, some might think that the chief's concerned... It's strange that the chief never expressed concern. I would just like to point out something. The arresting officer was not the one who incorrectly produced the audio logs. That's how you can tell that failure to properly disclose evidence in a trial is truly proper police procedure. It here in here in Livermore, it was a group effort. I'll be back to the missing records in the next week.
And with that, we will have you back next week. Thank you, Mr. McGuigan. John Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. Two items. One is the proposed rezoning of the land between the railroad tracks and First Street, between the... Basically, between the casino and the auto-related uses. The downtown has a number of auto-related uses still in existence, a transmission shop, Jiffy Lube, some small places. Where will they relocate as the downtown is revitalized? Also, there seems to be an assumption that we can keep adding population, keep adding houses without adding infrastructure. I mean, cars are becoming more complicated. We have hybrids, electric cars, and there will be a need for more auto-related services. Where will they go? In the same way, where will the existing shopping centers expand to? Where will churches expand to? Where will we put parks? There was talk of a sports park. Where will that go? There was talk of a third high school. Where will that go? So the assumption seems to be that we can expand the population by 25 or 30% over the next 20 years and not add infrastructure. I mean, infrastructure is elastic, but not that elastic. So I urge you reconsider. I mean, we will need more auto-related uses. We'll need more places for home repair contractors to locate. And I don't think you should just rezone based upon the request of a single developer. The second issue is the workshop on Thursday. It seems as though time is out of joint, to quote Hamlet. Typically, we have the workshops before the decisions are made, so I'm sort of wondering whether the decision with Leonard is cast in concrete and whether it will just be a presentation by Leonard as to what an exciting and wonderful project they're presenting on how we should be enthusiastic and elated that we're converting the downtown into high-density residential. Or as a group that I just got a flyer from seems to think it's cast in jello, and you can sort of rearrange it and create the spaces and places that they feel the downtown needs. I'm not sure, understand what the purpose of the workshop is. I think the workshop would do well to look at financing, parking, and the changes in the downtown that will be needed in terms of design guidelines, density, and a whole host of other things as we become more focused on residential and less on entertainment and destination dining. But it's unclear. I mean, it seems like the cart is being placed before the horse. The decision has been made, as I understand it, and yet we're having a workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Mr. Kiefer, would you be so kind as to respond to the focus of the workshop? Again, we're also going to... On August 1st, we're going to have a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the city council as well, but could you specifically address the 14th? Because we would like as many people that are watching tonight to participate in the workshop on the 14th, or if they can't be there, to provide comments on the website or by calling.
Right. The purpose of the workshop this Thursday, July 14th, begins... The workshop begins at 6:30. It's at the Robert Livermore Community Center. And the purpose of the workshop is to gain community feedback on the proposed plan. This is in conjunction with a number of other meetings that the staff is holding with a number of stakeholders, including the Chamber, the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, the Downtown Merchants, the Downtown Property Owners. Those will be other stakeholder meetings. The purpose this Thursday will be to gain feedback from the entire community. So we will be structuring it in such a way that, yes, Leonard and Presidio will present their plan as proposed, and then we'll divide the group into a series of tables and have a series of very open-ended questions to gain feedback from the entire community.
So to get feedback and to refine the proposal?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, that's it for the cards that I have. Moving on to the consent calendar. Anybody wish to pull any items on the consent calendar for discussion? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, suit them have a saying, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Moving on to public hearings. 5.01 has been continued. This is the Pleasant View Lane. That'll be continued until September, so we're refining that. Moving on to 5.02. This is the hearing to consider protests related to the non-payment of the solid waste, recycling, and organics handling. This is probably Judy Erlinson is going to be stepping up to the plate. And Marissa Gann as well.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the city council. My name is Marissa Gann, and I'm the city's recycling specialist. Tonight, the city council will consider approving lien assessments for the non-payment of services provided by Livermore Sanitation. There are approximately 26,000 accounts serviced by Livermore Sanitation in the city. As of this morning, there are only 58 residential accounts and one commercial account that are eligible for lien, who are 12 months behind on their payment. Despite repeated notifications from Livermore Sanitation, service reductions, and two notices from the city of Livermore, the accounts continue to be significantly overdue. Per the franchise agreement and the Livermore Municipal Code, the city is obligated to consider imposing liens for these delinquent accounts. These customers had up until today at 7:00 PM to pay their bill and not have their property leamed. Staff has observed a significant decline in the number of liens being proposed this year compared to previous years. Many of the accounts on this year's list have been leaned in previous years. Of the 59 accounts eligible for lien, 41 are accounts that have been leaned before. Staff recommends that city council consider protests, adopt a resolution overruling protests, and confirm the 2016 lien assessments, directing staff to forward a finalized copy of the assessment report to the county tax assessor. Thank you for your consideration, and staff are available for questions.
Any questions at this point? Okay. Chris Spadowski?
Yeah, just one question, maybe for the city attorney. Is there a way, instead of putting a lien on the property, we can put it on the special assessments in the future? As we heard, that there's multiple properties that it seems like it's just a lien that's put on every year, and they're non-responsive, but is there some mechanism that we can use to put it on the special assessment, so it's on their property tax bill instead of a lien?
The liens are placed on the property tax, are they not?
The liens are, yes.
Oh, they're on the property, the actual property tax. So they will be paying it with the annual property tax. It's not just a lien that goes towards, you know, that's incumbent on the sale of the property.
That's right.
Okay. I'm also seeing our finance director. It's okay, so, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing. I have no cards at this point, so with that, I will take it that there are no protests. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and then seek a motion.
I'll move to approve item 5.02.
Moved by Councilmember Spadowski. Seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? Any opposition to the motion? Any abstentions? It passed unanimously. So thank you very much. 5.03. This is the hearing to consider the annual progress report, tracking the city's progress in implementing the housing element.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the city council. So I'm just going to give a very brief presentation with a few slides, and then can open it up for questions. The annual progress report is a tool for tracking progress towards meeting the goals and objectives in the city's housing element. The housing element is one of seven mandated elements of general plans in California. Its purpose is to help local governments adequately plan for the existing and projected housing needs. We have completed the first year of implementing the 2015 to 2022 housing element. The first goal of the city's housing element is to address the diverse housing needs of all economic segments of the community by allowing for a range of housing types, price levels, and density. So the framework for quantifying housing need by income is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. The RENA is based on the state's projection of population growth for each region. The city of Livermore's share of the Bay Area's need between 2015 and 2022 is just over 2,700 units. The city is not required to construct this housing just to show that there is enough land designated for residential development. The RENA is divided into income categories based on a percentage of the median household income. So for reference, a four-person household in Alameda County would be considered moderate income if they made between $71,600 and $112,200. So Tables A and B of the annual progress report track the number of housing units constructed in each of these income categories, including market rate and deed restricted units. In 2015, the city issued building permits for 436 units. This is above the average over the last eight years, which was 128 units, reflecting the recession nationwide. Last year's building activity is comparable to the previous eight-year period from 1999 to 2006, which reflects more normal economic conditions. Staff anticipates issuing over 200 residential building permits each of the next two years due to construction of recently approved projects such as Sage by Shea Homes. So of the 436 units built in 2015, 16 are considered affordable to low or moderate-income households, including nine secondary dwelling units, a triplex, and the inclusionary units integrated with the Vincenzo II project. About 40 deed-restricted units will be constructed in the next coming years as part of approved projects as well. The other projects constructed in 2015 paid the in-lu fee to comply with the inclusionary requirement, as these went through the entitlement process during the time when the city had suspended the onsite requirement. At this rate of construction, about 400 units, the city is on track to meet the overall RENA. But the new housing that is being built is heavily skewed towards the above-moderate end of the affordability spectrum. And of the 436 units, 277 were single-family detached, and 143 were attached condominiums or townhouses. So the attached products, we found, have a starting sale price that is about $100,000 less than detached houses, making this an important housing type for first-time homebuyers. However, these units are generally out of reach for many working families, as housing prices have skyrocketed throughout the Bay Area in recent years. So to address this need, the city has a variety of programs intended to increase and preserve the stock of affordable housing and for providing housing assistance to residents. Table C of the annual progress report tracks the status of these programs. For example, the city uses inclusionary in-lu fees for the construction of affordable housing and owns four sites for this purpose. Staff is currently working with Mid-Penn Housing on a mixed-income development called Chestnut Square, which proposes 116 affordable units, including 73 for seniors and 43 for families. So this item does not require any action by the council, but we do need to offer the opportunity for a public hearing and comment in accordance with state law. And following this meeting, staff will file the annual progress report with the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So that concludes the brief presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions at this point? Councilmember Warner?
Just asked one. The... You look at all the numbers and the actual progress versus the goals or the allocation and everything. Can we just conclude that adequate progress is being made, or with respect to at least the state requirements?
I think we can conclude that we are making progress, and in terms of the overall supply of housing that we should be accommodating, is we are making progress on that. The affordability piece is the challenging part.
Well, yeah, I can see that, but I meant, you know, some of our surrounding communities have gotten crosswise with the state on various cases, but can we conclude that as far as getting any special attention from the state, we're okay?
Yes.
Your issue there is that state law requires that you provide the property to be general-planned and zoned, that you not have special restrictions that would impede that, that you not have growth limitations or other items that would conflict with your ultimate ability to provide the necessary sites and the necessary infrastructure to provide for that. But it does not require, nor does it provide, the funding, more directly, to actually create that housing. The extremely low, very low, and low requires external funding in order to make those units happen. So we are in compliance. Our housing element is certified. This report shows that we are doing all of the things that we need to, to maintain that compliance.
So unlike some communities around here, we're not going to get into a legal tangle with the state?
Not over this one.
Right. Thank you.
But the fact is, is we have to zone and ensure that there's sufficient land to build this, but we don't build the housing. We just ensure that it's... That the land is zoned and available to provide this. And what I find stunning is that low income is $72,000 a year. And I think that people, you know, when you go other places in the country, that's something that a lot of people can't get their heads around, is that it's very expensive to be low-income here in the Bay Area.
You have to be very rich to be poor here.
Over on the peninsula, isn't it? One community has several hundred thousand a year, and you can still get housing assistance.
Okay, so this is... So we review and accept. Mr. City Attorney, would you like formal action on this, or just acclamation?
No, sir. The actual action before tonight is as the staff presentation articulated. Your role today is to review and receive the report and allow for a public comment. No action is necessary to accept this report.
Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing, and I have a card from Andrew Barker. Mr. Barker?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Andrew Barker. I rent an apartment at the corner of College in Livermore. Every year, the apartment management sends me a letter telling me what my rent will be next year, so this question of housing affordability maybe has a different impact on me than it does on you sitting up there, or on many members of the audience here tonight. My first experience with local politics, local land use, was in fact the community workshop in December 2014 that discussed this housing element. workshop in December 2014 that discussed this housing element. My first clue that no one was taking it very seriously was that there were a grand total of about 12 people there. I think we were outnumbered by staff. My second clue was when the housing element was completed, and I downloaded it from your city website, this is still true by the way. If you look at the document properties of that PDF file, it says, "Housing Element for the City of Pasadena, California." So you hired a consultant to copy and paste some other city's housing element and pass that off as something so that you could meet your state requirements. But the most important way I know that no one is taking this housing element seriously is this chart right here. So this is typical. I've looked at several similar charts for different years. It's typical that, based on our regional housing needs allocation, that's a needs allocation, not a wants allocation or a nice-to-have allocation, that we need to build 150 low to very-low housing units every year. And a typical year, you build two or six. Now, you've said several times, it's emphasized in the staff report, it's emphasized in the housing element itself, Ms. Park said it, Mr. Rochan said it, Mr. Warner said it, you are not required to build this housing. Before I moved to Livermore, I taught a little bit. I taught math classes, and this reminds me of, you know, maybe watching one of my groups do group work. So what are we required to do? What's the minimum we can get away with? What could we do and not get slapped on the wrist? Maybe you should think of it in a different perspective. Maybe you should think of the people who are hurting because of these housing prices. Maybe you should think of not what we have to do to avoid getting sued, but what can we do to help families and residents of Livermore that are really hurting because of housing prices? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. And I would just like to, at this point, say that we have a tremendous human services effort that is made through our human services staff that looks at specifically ways of providing the maximum amount of affordable housing in Livermore. We work very closely with a number of nonprofits to provide for affordable housing. As the city manager pointed out, everything low, very low, extremely low requires significant subsidies, and the city of Livermore is very limited as far as where we can draw those funds from. But we do pull in funding from CDBG. We work with a number of, as I said, nonprofits to provide for this. So this is something that we take lightly. We take this very seriously, and we work with developers to be able to maximize as much affordable housing in Livermore as we possibly can. So, I'm going to add to that.
I'd like to speak to the housing situation. I'll give you a card. I think that Livermore, Connie Cops, I'll give you a card. This one was for a different number, but I'll give you that one too. I was told that, you know, the demand for our housing is, you know, pretty strong here because of, you know, what's going on in Silicon Valley and what's going on in the city and that. I think Livermore might depend a little too much on its faith-based organizations for our low to moderate housing, and I don't really know what the answer is, but I hope that we, as a community, maybe try not to put so much of that on our faith-based community because that's something that can change, and I think we should really maybe put a little bit, you know, find funding to maximize a balanced housing, so there's low, medium, and high, and so that we're, if nothing else, segueing, you know, those who can't out of Livermore in a humane way so they can find affordable housing somewhere. And, you know, I think that we do a good job, you know, with our, you know, students and our children, you know. It's hard when you've got somebody who's, you know, living at this end, next door to somebody who's living on this end, you know. Kids grow up with some really mixed messages from parents and that when you're dealing with families. And keep in mind that is, when you do develop housing, that there's a lot of people that are attracted to, like, condensed living. There's a lot of people that'll go crazy if they're packed on top of each other. I don't think a lot of the problems that we have with violence and like the other areas of our counties and that have to do so much with anything but being packed and too concentrated. I think the projects in the past, if people aren't working for where they're at, you know, for their home, if they're not putting something into it, and if they're living on top of people, it's just a recipe for disaster. So make sure that whatever we do gear people into, we do it with dignity and we do it with lifestyle in mind, you know. There's very rich people that, you know, would love to just live in a little one-unit, you know, city-type atmosphere, but again, you know, these people that live in areas where they're getting a lot of infill, you know, if they bought a subdivision that was pretty much established, to start piling things in their backyard is, I think, wrong. And so my input for housing and future allocations too is to have some of it out past the boundary lines of Livermore and up, you know, but try to blend in with the hills. Thank you.
Well, one of the issues that we run into with the building outside the urban growth boundary is that would take a vote of the public, because that was a citizens' initiative in 2002 that created the urban growth boundary. So the idea when that was created was to infill develop rather than continue the model of urban sprawl. So we really can't build outside the urban growth boundary unless there's another citizens' initiative or unless it's put on the ballot. And the last time it was put on the ballot in 2005, 72% of the voters voted in favor of preserving that urban growth boundary. So that's a big lift. Councilmember Spadowski?
Yeah, a quick question. So the entitlements for Chestnut will be fall of 2016. When do we expect construction to begin? Would that be 17?
Yeah, probably spring of 2017. So that'll involve about 116 affordable units, predominantly very low and low. Then we have a couple of other projects that are in the works. The Breezy Neighborhood Plan has an apartment project that'll have about 65 units affordable. And then we have another project, the Sunflower Hill Project, which will result in about another 40 units.
Forty units or so, yeah. And so that number will start to grow around 2017-ish. So we have these in the pipeline. Is Chestnut one of the first projects of its type in the city with the partnership with the city of that size and scale? I can't really, in recent history? Is that fairly accurate?
It's one of the larger ones, although we've had a number of other projects, 80 units, 60 units.
And we've also had McLeod. That was another one that we partnered with. And the one recurring theme that I'm seeing with these projects is we are developing new partnerships with other agencies, and in many ways, creative partnerships. When I toured the McLeod site, I was very impressed with the social services and the nonprofit developers that were involved with purchasing and rehabbing that site. So I'm hoping that those projects are more of a template and partnerships that we can build off of and start to get more of these projects built in town. Because I understand, I mean, I think I'm barely above moderate at this point, personally speaking. I have several people that I've talked to recently, including a relative that can no longer afford to rent in town, and they did not want to move. They love Livermore, but they just can't afford it. So I am, you know, when I saw this chart in the slide and also in the packet, yeah, I mean, it just, it hits you, that does not, the built-in 2015 bar right there is just, I mean, it's very impactful showing you the above-moderate as opposed to everything else. But I think with Mid Penn and those development groups that we're working with, I'm hoping it's just the start and we learn how to become efficient and effective in developing these projects. I know our Affordable Housing Fund continues to grow and we're finding ways, you know, you just don't want to take that fund and spend it all on one project. We're trying to figure out ways to maximize that money, matching grants, finding the nonprofits. Nonprofits, they do what cities can't do, or, you know, are just not able to with funding or structure. So I think it's, you know, it's, again, we're, you know, in some respects, we're moving at the speed of local government with this, but I am encouraged, if I can, you know, I'm forever the optimist, but I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing coming up. I just, you know, I want it now. But I do believe that we're constructively working towards making these types of development systematic and kind of not unusual and not unique. That's what I hope that we're moving towards.
Councilmember Spadowski, did want to give some context here. The purpose of the annual report is to put information just like this in front of you so that you understand where we are in the process. The item you don't have in front of you is the catalog of the affordable housing units we have on the ground. We have more than 1,000 units in the city, which are deed-restricted in some way for affordability. Those range from apartment units to condominiums to some single-family homes that have silent-second mortgages on them. We have a whole variety of programs that we, we were one of the first communities in California to have an inclusionary program. We were the first city in Alameda County to have an inclusionary fee. We have had staff, providing staff for affordable housing for over a quarter century in this community. So we do take this extraordinarily seriously. What you saw, however, on your housing production chart gives you a clue of why we're here. If you go back to that chart, you'll notice that our production of all housing just a couple of years ago hovered below 100 units per year. So what you all know, but maybe the general public doesn't know, generally takes between three and five years to cobble together the funding sources for an affordable project. There are basically, each of those funding sources has its own timeline. Those have to be ultimately cobbled together. We don't generally fund affordable housings, especially at the extremely low and very low, with city funds. That would be extraordinarily inefficient. So when you're hearing that we had a lot of housing production of above-moderate in 2015, but it takes till 2017 to get the larger amount of affordable housing online, that's not surprising at all. In fact, that's not actually the city not doing its job, it's the city doing its job very aggressively to actually move with the economic cycle. So we're always going to be about 24 to 36 months behind. We're always going to be looking for additional funds. And of course, two very sad developments, which was very painful to us, was when the governor's office, ultimately through the Office of Planning and Research, restricted our ability to use our must-build requirement until we completed a study. So that's why you saw that number drop dramatically over previous years. Luckily, our latest housing element reinstated that, and you all adopted our must-build requirement. That's one of the most efficient and effective ways we get units into the ground. And the second item is the loss of redevelopment. That was our single biggest funding source for affordable housing that was state-sanctioned, pumping millions of dollars and actually hundreds and hundreds of units into the ground here in Livermore. That's gone, and the state still at this point struggles to replace that funding source. Lots of folks throughout the more expensive parts of California are struggling with that. But I did want to give a slightly more complete picture, that we've been at this a really long time. We've done hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of units over time, and we still have more than 1,000 units that are under restrictions that exist right here. A fraction of those are faith-based, but most of them are nonprofit-based as well as direct-city programs.
I've got a question, just to put it in perspective. A, you know, a low-income housing unit, what's the all-in cost per unit? Land, everything?
Generally, the city, you know, the affordable, the amount at which a unit can be actually sold for, its affordable number ranges from the high 100s to the high 200s, and the cost to produce that unit is somewhere in the high 500s to the mid 600s. So you sort of see the gap.
So half a million to produce a unit?
And essentially a sales price of roughly half that.
Right, I'm forgetting the sale price, but...
Or a rent that would support roughly half.
Here's where I'm trying to go.
Right.
Say we're talking about wanting to build 100 or 200 of these units per year at half a million.
That's not a net cost to you. It would be about half that. But in other words, somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 of subsidy per unit would be required even with other programs to create that unit. The number gets big really fast.
200 units to 200,000, what is that, 40 million? So that's 40 million annually, and what's the size of our, what?
It's half our budget.
Yeah, so I was just trying to put some reality on this. It's one thing to talk about units and all this kind of stuff, but you're talking 20 to 40 million dollars a year out of our budget, and, you know, how much is that per person that they would have to pay for this, for, you know, residents? So that's why this is so difficult. And the point is, as opposed to other communities that failed to even zone for this, we're zoning for it so that if somebody came along with the money, then they meet all the other requirements, then we go forward, right? So we're setting up the conditions for this to happen, at least allowing it from the zoning rules. We're collecting the housing funds, and when we can, we accumulate them into a large enough block so we can build a setup there. But this isn't an easy problem to solve, and it basically comes down to, it requires a tremendous amount of money.
Mr. Speaker, Gary?
Thank you all for the conversation and the explanation. I think the, two or three little teachable moments out of this. Mr. Roberts, once again, our compliments. You've got such a long-tenured history with the city. You can give an individual snapshot in time staff report, that legacy perspective of how far we've come and what's left to go and how, as Councilmember Warner said, we've set the stage for adding and bundling units. I haven't looked specifically at the city sub-page on housing before, but if it doesn't contain your last two minutes of explanation, I think in terms of FAQs and explaining what the city has done, continues to done, frankly, show leadership in the Tri-Valley, given the zoning and the programs we have in place. We are doing the very best that we can in the economic conditions we find ourselves, and the cold, hard local government reality is that the local taxpayer doesn't solely fund inclusionary housing. We need the partnerships of the nonprofits, and we need the state and federal dollars as well as the developer contributions. So the cobble-together explanation really does work in this sense, and I think maybe in the future, when we do the standalone reports with just a 12-month snapshot that taken only of themselves, looks, oh, we're not doing enough. And preloading that staff report with five or eight bullet points at the front end, here's the housing program story, here's what we're required to report this year in this report. And also certainly staff's apologies for the website glitch. Having been a member of this staff for years and knowing this team, we don't pay for consultant studies glued and pasted from somebody else. We've all read the housing reports, we read the associated materials with tonight's staff report. They're very specific to Livermore, and whatever the glitch was on grabbing and uploading the wrong document is easily correctable. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, because you're right, on a weekly basis, we don't all look at every sub-webpage on the city's site in terms of updates. But we should feel very good about what this community continues to do for housing, and I think once Livermore reaches its general plan build-out, we'll stand tall in not just the Tri-Valley, but in the East County for continuing to be a diverse, cosmopolitan community that's done its level best to meet everyone's needs.
Thank you. Just one other point, there was an interesting disconnect in some of the comments from the speakers. There was a complaint about the housing being too dense, that you've got people stacked on top of each other, and that there's also not affordable housing. However, land can go anywhere from $2 to $2.5 million an acre here in Livermore. So if it's $2.5 million an acre and you're talking about six units to the acre, and $150,000 per house for the park, water, all the fees, it's about $700,000 before you put a stick on the property or buy any utilities or appliances. So it gets very expensive. So it's kind of a trade-off. If you're looking for more affordable housing, and it's $2.5 million an acre, you have to increase the density to get the cost down so that it's something that a family can afford. So this is a real interesting disconnect, that people want more affordability, but they don't want to increase the density. And this is one of the ways that we can increase affordability, is by bumping the density up a bit. We're not talking about San Francisco-type densities, we're talking about something that's much more in keeping with what we have here in Livermore. So with that, shall we just accept this, or do you want a motion on that, Mr. City Attorney?
No motion is necessary.
Okay, so we've reviewed and accepted the report. So the public hearing is closed, and moving on... So the public hearing is closed, and moving on to matters for consideration. Voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Conference, who's going to the conference? Anybody? Everybody, oh, wow. Everybody must be working.
I don't know yet.
Okay. So everybody has jobs, right? Well, I'm certainly going. So I will nominate myself as, well, designate myself as the voting delegate. And if anyone else is going to be going, you can get back with me, and I'll check with Councilmember Turner.
I was going to say, given her involvement in league activities and in years past, I'm 9-10 certain she will make every effort to attend, and if you want to even provisionally designate...
I'll check with her, and then I can. But, well, okay. Mr. City Attorney, do I have to provisionally designate tonight, or can I do that at a later date?
According to the rules established by the city council, the mayor has a prerogative to appoint council members to various bodies.
But I mean, do I have to do that tonight, or can I do it?
You can do it later.
Later, okay. Well, let's go. I will nominate, I will designate myself as the voting delegate with an alternate to be determined at a later date. Okay, great. Moving on to discussion in direction regarding the primary argument for ballot measure for the designation of open space for the Springtown, the former Springtown Golf Course. Okay, we have Connie Cops. So let's, one of the, when I read this, one of the things that sort of jumped out at me was, if I can just pull it up here, where it stated in the argument, it has never been the intention of the city council. And that sounded almost a little bit too defensive. So just, my suggestion is to say, in keeping with what we talked about back in December, it is not the intention of the city council to develop the land for any other purpose.
No, you should have seen the first version.
Oh, I can...
I'm joking, yeah. No, that's fine.
Okay.
Agreed.
You're the author.
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
We two are. So it's your two's turn to...
Okay. That's, I said, it is not the intention, because there was some concern at the last meeting that I was at, that there was, why was the city doing this? Well, it was to put the community at ease, that we were in fact, did not have the intention.
So I would suggest that the third paragraph is the essence, and that you could consolidate this to just two paragraphs. And one is the third paragraph, and then you could just elaborate that the current city council doesn't intend to, you know, ever develop it, however this prevents any future council. I mean, the third paragraph is sufficient in itself. I don't know that you need to say anything else.
No, the rest gives a little bit of history and context.
Yeah, okay.
And we got 200 words, so...
Well, yeah, but the question is, and you always get to it, do you lead off with the thing, or do you finish it with the thing? But I'm saying the third paragraph is the most important reason why this matters. And, you know, I started reading the history of the golf course, and it's like, I don't care. But the third paragraph tells me why I care about this. That's all. I mean, it's just...
Are you saying move the third paragraph to the first?
Yeah. If you want to, you want to, you know, continue to talk, go ahead. But I always say the first key argument, put it first. Of the alternative, you say, have all the introductory stuff and whatever, and then get to the point later. I mean, it's your choice. I go for point first.
Fine. We had long versions, short versions, versions in between, so whatever works, I'm always in favor of condensing it, because I do believe when you're reading through all the ballot measures, in particular, how many, there's going to be propositions, and they're...
Seventeen.
This is going to be the biblical proportion, you know, ballot, so...
Just get to the point and be done with it.
Yeah, whatever works.
Well, I would support moving the third paragraph to first, and then leaving the rest as is with a separate two sentences, with the grammar change the mayor suggested, it's not been the intent. Yes, it's helpful to get right to the point, but an awful lot of voters will pick this up going, why is it even here? And I think having a bit of history, plus the council's intent, is just good backstory that develops the full argument. And yes, we chopped it down to get it to a succinct...
Well, I think this is, this is good. I mean, I would, you can just leave it alone, and I'd be happy.
Because this is, most of the people...
I like the idea of the action, put the actionable item in first position, and then follow up with the context. It's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we had about 100 words left over, so we could ramble a little bit more if you want to pull the typical politician.
Yeah. I'll take over that on that. No, good. Okay, I do have one card, card for Connie Cops.
Okay, I'm really going to be so angry if this goes on the ballot at all right now. I think that there's a lot of misinformation. First of all, 1971 was not the year. Second of all, what is your motive? Okay? Where are the golf course parameters? If you designate that open space, you know, we're going to need open space in order to build for, you know, our people. You have to have open space if you want to build. What are you going to do with the parameter? Where is the end of what's going to be open space? Who's going to vote against that? Because you know you're doing, like, all kinds of infill. Who's going to vote for that? You know, this was designated, from what I was told all along, you know, with the golf course, and like, way longer than, or before 2003, is that golf course was bought, termed and conditioned, or acquired with terms and conditions, that it did remain open space. That was the terms and conditions. That's what I heard. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, because no one seems to have the terms and conditions anymore. I am not totally against it, but I question your motives. I've asked legitimate questions. I wanted maps since December of 2014. I don't trust what you're doing this for. And I don't think it really should go on the ballot until it's really been established that, you know, what were the terms and conditions of the golf course purchase? Why did it fail? Why did you tell the park district that a golf course is not an option? Again, I know you're a really smart person. You know, I know, Stu, you kind of initiated this conversation again. Well, I went to so many Shrine Center meetings, you know, to discuss this issue, and forgive me if I've forgotten anything, but there's unfinished business. This should not be on the ballot just yet. And I don't think it will end up being built out or built up the way it is. But what did you buy? There's a lot of, you know, if you look, if you look at the past business with it, and the past business in Springtown, and who owns, the park district owns this, the city owns that, the city owns that, but the park district's got a maintenance agreement on it, I really think you have an obligation to do this in a more transparent process, to have the maps out there, the terms and conditions out there, the past history out there. Because when all is said and done, even though Darren Greenwood provided me with maps that did, you know, that are title report, it doesn't cover liens. You know, the parameters aren't spelled out, the boundaries aren't spelled out. Go back to the drawing board and make sure we're all on the same page about what you're trying to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops.
I've got a question.
Yes.
For staff. So this ballot measure wouldn't change the ability for this to be a golf course again in the future, right?
That is correct.
So I think, you know, you questioned the motives and everything, but this is a case where they're fairly transparent and driven from, you know, pure intentions. The point is that the community is very concerned, as happened in other communities, that a golf course like this could be developed. And the reason for this initiative is to make it clear that it's not an option. But in some of the surrounding communities, I mean, some bad actors have come in, bought the golf courses, and then, you know, dumped manure on them and done all kinds of things just to try and get people to let them develop it. So the point of this initiative is pure and simple, to prevent this from ever being developed without the vote of the people, and that we don't want to leave it to the capriciousness of any future council.
Where is that 3-3 figure in this report?
That was one of the issues that came out at the December meeting that we had at the Elks Lodge, and at the last meeting that we had here. A gentleman got up and said, well, what if the council changes its mind? And that was why we're putting this on the ballot, is so that the councils, it doesn't matter if the council cannot change its mind, it will be open in space, and, you know, we can't build on open space. So we are asking the public to make the ultimate decision on this, that they will vote this as open space, and no future council at that point can put housing or anything else on this property. It will be, unless there's another vote of the people to change that. But that's why, ultimately, as the ultimate transparency, we're putting it out to the public. We've already voted to keep it open space so that it will not be developed. And now we're having the voters of Livermore affirm that, so that there will be no building on that property, that it will be permanent open space, and that can't be changed except by a vote of the public.
Vice Mayor. Appreciate the clarifying comments, and to bring it back on point tonight, appreciate Mrs. Cops' input, as always. You and others may not like the closing of the golf course, the reuse of the land as passive open space, but tonight, what's publicly noticed on this agenda is one very narrow issue, the wording of the language for the ballot statement. This council has already voted to put it on the ballot. We are not reconsidering from testimony or ourselves tonight anything other than strictly the wording of the initiative, language on the ballot, as Councilmember Warner said, to protect the property by a vote of the people to be open space, yet to be shaped under the master plan with the residents, et cetera, et cetera, in the community. So based on that, this is consistent with the prior actions of the council. The only thing before us tonight is the actual language. Councilmember Spodowski worked hard on this. I appreciate Councilmember Warner's input on reordering it. And with that, I'll make the motion to move the language with the changes we discussed.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Warner, moved by Vice Mayor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Passed unanimously.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to put your context of your action this evening in context, you will receive the actual action to place this on the ballot on June 25th, following up on your prior direction. At that time, you will order it to an election. Following that action, the county registered voters will provide a letter designation for the measure, at which time you can add that to your ballot argument, sign that, and return that. Based upon the current ordering, if you were to order this to election on July 25th, this argument would need to be signed and submitted to the city clerk by August 8th.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we go to committee reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Spodowski?
Sure. On June 27th, I attended the Lafta Projects and Services Subcommittee, and I have nothing to report from that meeting. On July 2nd, I attended the Hagaman Farm Open House. I believe it was the first open house. Very surprised at the turnout. I read in the paper, it was about 400 people for a first event. I think that was very successful. They had everything from auctions, a barbecue, balloon animals for the kids, and got to witness fava bean shucking. So that was one of the things checked off the bucket list there. I've always wanted to see how fava beans were shucked, ever since, you know, Silence of the Lambs, I guess. But, yeah, there's just, you know, a petting zoo, and the garden there is just absolutely amazing. So it's just, it's a great event. Can't wait to go next year. The only other item that I have to report is, earlier today, we had the Lafta Board Meeting. We did receive a quarter of a million dollar grant to replace two hybrid electric buses. With that, I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Warner?
Nothing to compete with the beans.
Me too. I don't think I can even say shucking fava beans three times quickly. You were very careful. I have no, I had no meetings to report in the last two weeks.
But did they come with a fine Chianti? I'm sorry, I couldn't...
That's the first thing. I was like, wow, this is like, where's Clarice?
Okay. So on the 22nd, Ellen Frank did a great talk at the library on the depot, the old train depot. Most common question is, when did they move the depot? And they hadn't moved the depot, the tracks moved. And so at the end of this discussion, a guy raises his hand, and he says, could you guys use the original ticket window for the train depot? And everybody just stopped. When they started to demolish the building, they chucked the ticket window into the dumpster, and he drove by and pulled it out of the dumpster, and he's had it for 40 years. And he's donating it back when we moved the depot. And this was part of the conditions, is we're getting like 2.5 million bucks to restore the depot, because the depot, this is why the Livermore Heritage Guild was founded, was to preserve the depot, but we've never had the money to preserve it. So interestingly enough, if we move it back to the tracks and put it back in service as a depot, we're getting 2.5 million bucks from the MTC. So it accomplishes everything, and it's going back home to the tracks. Had the ribbon cutting for the new high-performance computing building, 654 at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. That was pretty cool. The June 30th, Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting, there was an open house that was mentioned at Hagaman Farm, which also featured the great work that Sunflower Hill is doing as well. And the July 4th fireworks, absolutely spectacular. How many people got into the downtown? It was great. Of course, we can no longer have it at Robertson Park, because they replaced the fields with artificial turf, and you can't have artificial turf in a fireworks fallout zone. So they can't go back to Robertson Park for that reason, plus the land, the parking south of the park was sold for development. So we found a way to make it work. Vice Mayor Gary did a tremendous job, sort of walking the whole area and doing a bird's eye view, and figured out, you know what? I bet we can do this. And if anybody knows something about blowing stuff up or keeping stuff from blowing up, it's the former chief and Vice Mayor Gary. The, let's see, July 6th was the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. There was a great deal of discussion about the downtown plan. Paul Spence and Eric Aranga and Steve Stewart were all there, did a great job of explaining it. And one of the things that came out was, in some of the discussion about the plans, that there's been some talk about having a standalone conference center, and yet, as Mr. Spence pointed out, the city has not received any proposal to operate a standalone conference center. However, the hotel in the Lennar proposal has offered to operate the conference center within the hotel. Now, I remember the city of Hayward had a standalone conference center a number of years ago, and it was losing stuff for like 200,000 or 300,000 dollars a year, because standalone just was, or they finally tore it down. But that's why there really needs to be somebody to operate it. And in all the discussion that I've heard about a standalone 299-seat theater and conference center, there's no proposal for anybody to operate a standalone facility. So we've got the Lennar proposal that has the conference center within the hotel, and everybody agrees that the conference facility should be next to the Bankhead Theater, so that they can have that synergism with the facility. Today had the, oh, I'm sorry, back up. Thank you very much for running the meeting last time. I was in Indianapolis at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Absolutely fascinating, is where we had about 220 mayors come together and talk about best practices, talking about recycling, and how, if the goal for recycling is reduction of greenhouse gases, there's a very specific window of about 35%. If you're talking about landfill reduction, that's a whole nother part of the equation. So you really have to refine and define what your purpose for recycling is. I'm a member of the Water Quality Mayor's Task Force, the Mayor's Water Task Force, and we talked about public-private partnerships and a way to leverage financing for that. There was an absolutely fascinating panel discussion on developing and... There was an absolutely fascinating panel discussion on developing and creating compassionate communities. And it was moderated by Ann Curry, the journalist. On the panel was Philip Anschutz, the well-known philanthropist, the Dalai Lama and Lady Gaga. It was fascinating, having three people with wildly different perspectives coming together on how important it is to develop kind and compassionate communities. And Mayor Fisher from Louisville, Kentucky and Mayor Tate from Anaheim were both there about how they were creating these compassionate and kind communities. Today, we had the Almedy County Transportation Commission, the I-580 express lanes. In May, 647,000 trips were made in the express and HOV lanes on 580. The commute from eastbound starts at about 3:00 in the afternoon and goes to 7:00 in the evening with a level of service F from 3:30 to 6:30. So these HOV, HOT lanes do, have a tremendous opportunity to free up that capacity. The Planning and Policy Ledge Committee, working on transportation trailer bills. Cap'n Trade went on, went out last month and they were expecting about $500 million in auction revenue for Cap'n Trade. It brought in about 10 million. So it's not quite the windfall that everybody thought Cap'n Trade was going to be. With that, I can't believe that we're doing this again so soon. But I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of the five Dallas police officers who were cut down last week. As you know, my father spent over 50 years in law enforcement. And police officers are human beings and they are, except we expect them to be superhuman. And they are tasked with trying to protect us, sometimes protecting us from ourselves. And it is incomprehensible to me that someone would target them. So with that, I'm adjourning this meeting in memory of those officers and with compassion toward their families. So that meeting adjourned.